The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 28, 2023. I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll begin, as always, with the presentation by staff of the Rules of Decorum and Civility.
...of the town in an efficient and effective manner. For the benefit of the entire community, the Town of Los Gatos asks that all speakers follow the town's meeting guidelines by treating everyone with respect and dignity. This is done by following meeting guidelines set forth in state law, in the town code, and on the cover sheet of the agenda. The town embraces diversity and strongly condemns hate speech and offensive hateful language or racial intolerance of any kind at board, commission, or committee meetings. Town council and staff are well aware of the public's right to disagree with their professional opinion on various town issues. However, antisocial behavior, slander, hatred, and bigotry statements are completely unacceptable and will not be tolerated in any way, shape, or form at board, commission, or committee meetings. All public comments at the board, commission, or committee meeting must pertain to items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the town and shall not contain slanderous statements, hatred, and bigotry against non-public officials. The town will go through the following steps if a disturbance results from a member of the public not following these rules. If participating remotely, town staff may mute the individual with an explanation for the record of why muting occurred consistent with this policy. If participating in person, the chair may call a recess for violation of this policy, resulting in the immediate cessation of the audio and video recording and the commissioners exiting the chamber or meeting room. Staff will determine if the individual should be removed or if all members of the public should leave, depending on the extent of the disturbance. In the event that all public members exit, only the press would be allowed back in the meeting. Once the individual or individuals leave, the commissioners would return to the chamber or meeting room, and the chair would resume the meeting. Persons disrupting a board, commission, or committee meeting may be cited for violation of the California Penal Code, Section 403.
Thank you for that, and then we'll move on to the roll call for tonight, beginning with Commissioner Janoff.
Here.
Commissioner Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Rasby?
Here.
And I'm here as well. I'll ask Commissioner Janoff to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, and I have just a couple of preliminary remarks. During tonight's meeting, any person desiring to speak must first be recognized by the chair. All participants must speak to the mic or when called on in Zoom. Public comments shall be directed to the commission as a body and not to the audience. No person other than commissioner's staff and the person having the floor is permitted to enter into the discussion. No member of the public is allowed to speak a second time, and there's no yielding of time to another speaker. So as the Planning Commission conducts the meeting this evening, we encourage active participation by the public, which is essential to our democracy and important to the work of the Planning Commission. Public input is always very much appreciated and considered by the commission. The public's participation can occur in several ways. First, written comments about items on the agenda may be submitted to staff in advance of the meeting, and those are presented to the commissioners for consideration. And during the meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First, we will have verbal communications during which an individual may speak on a matter that is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And during the hearing tonight on Agenda Item Number Two, any member of the public may speak on that item. If you wish to address the commission tonight during verbal communications or when we consider Agenda Item Number Two, please raise your hand in the Zoom app, or for those here in person, please complete a speaker card, and that will be passed on to me by staff. When you speak, please come up to the microphone, speak directly into it since the meeting's being recorded, and I ask you to provide your name and address if you're willing; otherwise, you can speak anonymously if you wish. So now we'll begin with the verbal communications portion of our meeting, during which members of the public are allowed to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And you have three minutes; staff will announce when your time is up. Do we have any members of the public on Zoom tonight, Mr. Paulson?
No one that's speaking on verbal communications.
And I don't have any card, but is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? Not seeing any. So we'll move on to our consent calendar, being the approval of the minutes of our meeting of June 14, 2023. Before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the commission has the right to request that the item be removed. Are there any such requests tonight? I do not see any. And so we'll move on to a motion request to approve the consent calendar. Commissioner Hanson?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, which consists of the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Burnett?
I second that.
Any discussion? No, so we'll have a raise of hands for those in favor of the motion, and it's unanimous. Thank you. So now we move on to Item Two on our agenda, which is a consideration of the appeal of the Community Development Director's decision to approve a second-story addition to an existing single-family residence on property zone R1D located at 473 Wright Avenue, APN 52906027, categorically exempt pursuant to seque, guideline Section 15303, new construction, and minor residential development application MR-22-013. The property owner is Vicky Lee; I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. And the appellant is James Woods; the project planner is Ryan Safdie. And I'll have a show of hands by commissioners who have visited the property. Thank you. And are there any disclosures? I don't see any. So, Mr. Staffie, I understand you'll be giving us a staff report tonight on this matter.
Yes, and thank you, commissioners. Before I use a proposal to construct a new second story on a property located at 473 Wright Avenue, the proposal also includes a first-floor addition as well as a remodel to the first floor. The project plans provided in Exhibit 11 also show a junior accessory dwelling unit on the first floor, which is not being reviewed as a part of this application pursuant to state law. The property is located on the west side of Wright Avenue and is occupied by a 777-square-foot single-story residence and attached garage. The subject site is surrounded by properties also comprised of single-family homes ranging from one to two stories tall. The proposed residence would not be the first two-story in the immediate neighborhood, would not be the tallest home in the neighborhood, would not be the largest in terms of square footage, but would be tied with two other properties for the largest in floor area ratio. The proposed home size would be 1,903 square feet with an attached 457-square-foot garage. The proposed residence retained the traditional architectural style and be roughly 26 feet tall in height. The consulting architect reviewed the proposed project and noted that the proposed bulk -- sorry, the proposed project is modest in scale with height, bulk, and articulation similar to the homes in the neighborhood. The architect made two minor recommendations, both of which were accepted by the applicant and incorporated into revised project plans. The consulting arborist also reviewed the project, made one recommendation, and the project plans incorporated that as well. The applicant conducted neighborhood outreach during the minor residential planning application process and provided a detailed summary of that outreach in Exhibit 10 of your staff reports. The public comments are also provided in Exhibit 15. In the applicant's letter, they summarized the previous design changes they have made to accommodate the different neighborhood -- the neighbors' concerns, including, first, modifying the southern second-story window sizes and locations to accommodate neighbor concerns to the south; second, adding five screening trees in the rear yard to accommodate the rear neighbor's privacy concerns; next, there were several design modifications to address privacy and shadow concerns of the neighbor to the north, who was also the appellant. Specifically, revisions making all second-floor windows on the north elevation either obscured or clear story for privacy; revisions to show a six-foot-tall lattice screen on the rear balcony for additional privacy; revision showing a proposed height increase to the shared side yard fence to further protect privacy; an explanation that no major ingress or egress windows are proposed on that north elevation; and as well, an explanation that the proposed design shows more than a 13-foot setback from that shared northern property line when town code requires five. Based on the details provided in the staff report, staff supported the minor residential application and mailed out the notice of pending approvals letters to the immediate neighbors on May 24. An appeal was received by the neighbor to the north on June 6. The appeal in Exhibit 13 mentions two major concerns, which were previously provided as public comment: the winter sun and the privacy of the rear balcony. The applicant provided an additional response letter to the appellant's points, and those are provided in Exhibit 14 of the staff report. Based on the discussion provided in that report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision to approve the minor residential application, with the conditions of approval provided in Exhibit 3 and making the findings in Exhibit 2. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Safdie. I'll turn to the commissioners and see if there are any questions of you at this time. I see none. So we'll now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the appellant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. And, Mr. Woods, would you come forward?
Thank you. My name is Jim Woods. I'm here with my wife, Jenny, and I appreciate the time. So, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to express our concerns with respect to the approved project for 473 Wright, which is next door to our home. We've been residents of Los Gatos and this home since 2000 and raised our three daughters here. The configuration of our home is such that the vast majority of our living space is on the southern side of our home and has southern-facing windows, which will face the proposed new structure. After reviewing the package prepared by staff for this meeting, including the response to our appeal, we feel the situation can be summed up in a simple statement. The proposed house at 473 was designed without any consultation with us. The response to our initial expression of concern in our subsequent appeal is essentially we can't address your concerns and get what we want, so we are proceeding with our original plan. We have asked questions which have not been answered, including how the first-floor windows align with our windows, so we still don't know if there will be issues there. Should there be alignment of those windows, as has been committed to for our neighbors to the rear, we would ask for trees to be planted to shield the view. The changes which have been made are minimal and don't actually address our concerns. We understand the applicant has gotten excited about this design, but the reality is they bought a constrained lot due to the redwood tree and are trying to keep this project a remodel, so even with those constraints, they designed a house which maximizes the square footage and contains every amenity they desire, and they won't compromise on anything meaningful. They are the ones who bought a constrained lot. What we don't understand is why the consequences and impact of those constraints should be transferred to us. They are getting what they want; the town is getting what it wants in protecting the redwood tree. When do we get consideration? Frankly, we have not been a meaningful part of this process. We became aware of the plans for the new structure in October of 2022, when a copy of the completed plans were dropped off on our doorstep. We reached out to the applicant to discuss our initial thoughts and concerns and set up a meeting to discuss those options. We asked for the architect to be included, but the applicant felt she could answer all our questions and declined to bring him to the meeting. In that meeting, we shared our concerns. The applicant asked us to document those concerns and share them with her so she could share them with her architect. We did this. After not hearing back, we followed up. We were asked to make suggestions which didn't substantially impact the design. While we are not architects, we did suggest the balcony be eliminated, the garage be pushed to the back of the lot, and that we receive the analysis on the north-facing first and second-floor windows to allow us to see if there is an issue there as well. We even provided a drawing with measurements of our home and its window placement to facilitate the analysis. The first two suggestions were dismissed as not compatible with the current design, and we've yet to receive the window placement information for the first floor. We also pointed out that in addition to the shadowing issues moving the garage to the back of the lot would provide more space between our home and theirs, with the current design, there will be as little as seven and a half feet between our bay window and the proposed house. This concern has also not been addressed. Finally, and for comparison's sake, I would like to point out that the house on the north side of our home was built from scratch several years ago. Those owners approached us early on and shared their vision. We had similar questions. We were also concerned about the impact of having a two-story structure five feet over the property line and shared that with them. They modified their conceptual design to push the garage to the back of their lot and raised and reduced the window -- the size of the windows facing our home. We are very conscious of the fact this appeal is not getting us off on a great footing with our new neighbors and are generally not the types to want to create tension and conflict. We also understand the desire of the applicant to maximize the living space and to get all the features they desire for what we are sure is a substantial investment. That said, we feel very strongly about how badly this situation has unfolded and how this currently approved plan will negatively impact our quality of life in our home. Therefore, we respectfully ask for a repeal of the approval and that a new design be completed, which to the greatest extent possible addresses our concerns, or at least some of them. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Before you go, let me ask if my fellow commissioners have any questions of you? Don't see any at this time. Thank you once more.
Thank you.
And so we'll next ask the applicant, Ms. Lee, to come to the mic and make a presentation for up to five minutes. Thank you.
I'm shorter, sorry. Hi, I'm Vicky Lee. This is my first rodeo in terms of trying to build something for myself. I've recently gone through a very ugly divorce, so buying this home and rebuilding it is something that I really want to plant roots in for myself and also for my kids. I have two boys, eight and 10. My 10 is turning 11, but he acts like he's turning 15. And I have a two-year-old white pup, White Lab. I did meet with Jim and Jenny at their home to talk about my plans. I don't know much about the architecture and the guidelines of it, so I asked them to address their concerns in an email so that I can forward that to my architect, because, again, I don't -- that's his -- you know, that's his -- that's what he's good at. That's not what I'm good at. My -- what I'm only good at is, you know, just a vision of what I would like to build for my kids and being a part of the community, and this is our dream home. This is what I want to build for the kids and hopefully start a new chapter with my boys. But yeah, so I'm doing everything I can to try to accommodate to everyone's needs, but I also have to be mindful of what my needs are with my kids, and putting the garage to the back of the house would just limit our backyard space for the boys and the pups to play with, so that's all I'm asking.
Thank you for that presentation, and I'll ask my commissioners, fellow commissioners once more if they have questions of you. Commissioner Janoff?
Thank you. Ms. Lee, did you forward the appellant's concerns about the window alignment to your architect, and was there a conversation about how your first-floor windows line up with the northernly neighbors' windows?
I did forward that whatever email that they sent me. I sent it over to my architect, Chris.
So it's your understanding that there isn't a window alignment issue?
I tried to have that discussions with him to see what we can do. We did try different iterations of how we can accommodate everybody's needs and concerns, and we even -- I even went back to my architect to see what is the best way of building a single-story home, but that left me with little to no backyard space.
Right. Another question, if I may. Is there a fence between your property and the property to the north?
Yes.
And how tall is that fence?
Six feet, I believe.
Thank you.
Yeah. And through the chair, the applicant's architect is available on Zoom and could potentially provide additional response to those questions if the commissioners would like.
Yes, he's on Zoom.
Thank you for that information, and with that comment from staff, do any of the commissioners have questions of the architect? Start with Commissioner Hanson.
Actually, I had a question for the applicant, I'm sorry. Is that okay, or? Okay. One of the things that was noted by one of the other neighbors, I think the one behind you, was about the rear balcony.
Yes.
And so you introduced the lattice screen, but there's still a privacy issue with your neighbors that are appealing. Did you give any consideration to eliminating the balcony altogether or putting in some other kind of screening so that they could have privacy, given the view line to their bathroom?
So, from my understanding, the lattice was to protect the privacy of my northern neighbors, which is Jim and Jenny, but my back neighbor had concerns about privacy to my balcony, second-story balcony, so he suggested that we put in tall trees, which I asked Chris, my architect, to go ahead and implement into the new updated plans.
Okay, so you're saying -- what you're saying is that the lattice screen is intended to address the privacy issue of the -- of your northern neighbors, the appellant?
Correct.
But they're saying that it doesn't. So how -- I mean, did someone -- did your architect design the screening so that, you know, with consideration to the viewing of the neighbors?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so my understanding initially was the -- I don't know what you call that, but where the balcony comes up, my neighbor was concerned about someone being six -- over six feet tall to look over their backyard, and the viewpoint from my -- from the previous plans shows that it's from a five-foot person, which is my height, I'm five feet. So to address that concern, if it's over -- if someone's over six feet, that's the reason why when we talked to Ryan, he suggested to put a lattice on that balcony on the second story.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. But if I have a question for the architect, I'll bring it up in a bit, so.
Yeah, well, Chris is also online, which is my architect. He can probably answer that better than I can.
Right, I think I have my answer, so.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Janoff?
Yeah, just excuse me, a procedural question before I continue. Will we have another chance to talk to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, then I will hold my questions. I would like to ask questions of the architect. Okay, but I'll hold them until we are second.
Okay, let's proceed then. Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, yeah, question, thank you for coming. So I believe in the packet, it was said that the appellant was more concerned about your balcony looking into their master bedroom windows.
That was not -- I was not aware of that. I was told that the balcony from five foot would look over their backyard, not their master bedroom window, because my understanding is all the bedrooms on the other -- on the south side, not the north side.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Lee, can you estimate the size of the backyard as proposed in your plan?
I can't, no. Can we have my architect answer that?
Certainly.
Please?
I don't think we have it available in our staff materials.
Yes, I can answer the questions.
Thank you.
You wanted to know the size of the backyard?
Correct.
It's -- to the rear of the house is 26 foot nine at the smallest dimension, and about 30 -- about 40 feet at the greatest dimensions, because the back of the house steps a bit.
Okay.
So it's a reasonably-sized yard, which she -- one of her goals was to have some yard space for her two young kids and her dog.
Understood, thank you, but could you possibly estimate the percentage of the yard that would be lost if the garage was moved to the rear?
We studied that extensively, and we lose a -- we lose a lot of the yard, but also we just couldn't fit what she needed in the house, because the -- we lose -- even with a two-story house, we lose a great deal of the floor area on the ground floor for the driveway, and then even more for the required 26-foot the driveway, and then even more for the, the required 26-foot turning area to access the garage. So it was, it's just, it was just untenable to attempt to do the detached garage. I should also point out that when we looked into that option, it, it actually, to get, to get what she was, to attempt to get what she wants in the house, it actually increased the size of the second story and increased the shadows on the north, north neighbor. So it was kind of a, kind of a, it would, it would provide more clearance to the, the new house, but it wouldn't reduce the shading. So it really didn't, didn't do what their goal was, the neighbor's goal. So we didn't pursue that. I should also say, we, we also looked extensively at doing a one-story. A one-story also didn't work in any, in any shape or form with a detached garage in back, again, for those same reasons. And even with, we, we have this big redwood tree that takes up a big section of our potential building area. So even with a one-story pushing the garage forward to the front setback, which is against the town design guidelines, and reducing the, the rear yard, I mean, increasing the house all the way back to the rear setback, even with that, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't meet her, her needs. So that's why we, we stuck with the, the plan we have, and, and, and I should say that the plan we have has, has significant second-story setbacks, and that, you know, even with a one-story house, the, the amount of one-story building that would be right at the five-foot setback with windows overlooking their house would be more than this proposal. So it's, you know, there's, there's little we can do that makes it better for the northern neighbor. The, the one thing I think that would be significant, I suggested in the packet, and I, page 89 and 90 of the packet, was where we could change the roof line over the garage to eliminate the, the bulk of the gable that's overlooking their, their living room and dining room. And that would, that would, that would increase their light and air, reduce the shadows from the new building. I don't think it looks as good as the existing house, but it would definitely assist the neighbor in their, their needs.
Okay. Thank you for that very complete response. So the location of the roof gable, or the configuration of the roof cable, gable was primarily aesthetic in nature?
Correct.
And it would be feasible to change that?
Yeah, the, the reason that we had the gable facing the side was, was again, to address one of the residential design guidelines where you try to make the garage less prominent. So reversing the gable to have it forward-facing makes the garage more prominent, but in this case, I think that might be a lesser concern than to allow the neighbors to have more light, air, and less shadows.
I see. And do we understand that that's something that your client is willing to do?
Yeah, we discussed it. She was willing to do that, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other questions? Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, thank you. And I have to stand corrected, I didn't mean the master bedroom. I meant that the woods were concerned about the second-floor balcony looking down on their two bathroom windows toward the back of the house, as someone on the balcony could actually look into the, into their window above their bathtub. So it wasn't the master bedroom, it was the bathroom. So that was my, so can you address that, please?
May I? Yeah, this is Chris Balding, the architect, again.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we did a, we did a sightline study from that balcony and the ridge line of the, of the first-story blocks of view of anybody on that balcony that's, that's up to five and a half feet tall. But of course, there are taller people, so at the suggestion of the town staff, we added the screen so that even a tall person couldn't, couldn't get a glimpse into that window. And I, I should also say that I believe the window over the tub is a, on that house is a, is a glass block, you know, obscure glass window. So I don't, I really don't think there's a privacy issue from that balcony into the woods, woods windows. I should also address the, the, the alignment of the windows on our first floor. There's only, there's only two windows on our first floor. There's, there's a bathroom window above, that's above the shower, so that already has a high window sill. And the only other window is a bedroom window. I don't know the exact alignment of that window, but I, again, with the seven-foot, we have a seven-foot fence proposed between the properties, and with the floor level and the height of Vicky and her family, you know, I don't think there's any privacy issue from that one window into the neighboring house.
Can I have a follow-up?
Have a follow-up, and then we'll go to Commissioner Janoff.
And thank you, Mr. Balding. So a second question would be, when you had the story poles there, what, where were you at in the design of the home? Had you, had you addressed the new, I think, gable design on the roof on the garage? Or, because it seems that's, you know, a concern, because the story poles show that most of all the sunlight would be eliminated from the 473 Wright, Wright Avenue.
We suggested that after the story poles went up and we got to see the photos that the woods provided of the story poles from their windows, specifically if you look at page 79 in the packet, which I believe is a photo out of their, of their dining room, I believe, that shows that gable, the, the story poles of that gable, and you can see how, how that, that first-floor gable is the thing that really blocks their light and air. So that's, that's why I suggested to Vicky Lee that maybe we could change that roof line of the garage and mitigate that, that issue somewhat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Janoff. You had your hand.
Yeah. Mr. Balding, question for you regarding your comment in your letter, talking about the winter sun shadow would only, would only affect the lower 42 inches of the, of the south-facing wall of the northerly property. Could you, could you just elaborate on that a little bit? It, it sounds like if it's, if it's not going above 42 inches, then most window sills are probably in that neighborhood. I'd just be interested in your comment that, that the shadow study, the interpretation of the shadow study was inaccurate and that your 42-inch number is more accurate. Could you just elaborate on what you think the actual impact of, of the proposed structure would be on providing additional shadows to the house to the north?
Yes. So if you look at the shadow study, which is on sheet A 1.1, I was referring to the shadow that's a, that's shown in crosshatch of December 21st at noon. So that shadow is drawn like it was cast across an empty lot. But of course, in reality, a shadow, if it hits a vertical wall, will, will stop at that wall, and the, the triangle between the, you know, the, the wall and, and the angle of the sun, well, if I drew this shadow study showing where the, the vertical wall, the shadow would stop at that vertical wall, it wouldn't, it wouldn't continue into the house. But that, that shadow at, at noon would only climb up to about the window sill height of the adjacent house with a five-foot setback, you know, which is about the side, about the height of a window sill. And, and also on that same shadow study, the, the main, the main gable of the garage is also the thing that casts most of that shadow at noon. So that, again, realigning the, the gable roof over the garage would, would greatly reduce the shadow on that northerly house.
All right. Thank you for that. And if I may, one more question?
Please.
Mr. Balding, working with your client, would it be possible to create a, a type of screening that the appellant is, would, would agree is meeting their privacy requirements better than lattice? It's, in, in their rebuttal, I guess, the, the concern was that they might not be able to see through the lattice because of the distance, but people on the balcony could see through the lattice into, into their property. Would it be possible to design something more, more complete coverage, with more complete coverage so that the, the lattice material itself isn't allowing for visibility?
Yes, we, we can make it solid. It would not be a problem.
Thank you.
Any further questions? So I meant to ask if there's anyone on Zoom who wanted to participate? I assume not. Thank you. So we'll now, thank you, Ms. Lee.
I thought Ms. Catherine asked a question for me?
You had a question?
I don't. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Have a seat. So we'll now give the appellant, Mr. Woods, up to three minutes to add any further comments he may have.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Couple things. One, I'm not sure if there are any other members of the public that wish, wish to speak. And then because this is an appeal, we actually go backwards, so we'd actually go back to the property owner, and the appellant is the last one to speak.
Yes, correct. So, Ms. Lee, you have three minutes to provide any additional comments.
I don't know what to say, other than, you know, I'm doing everything I can to build this home for my, just for me and my boys and the pup, so we can start our, our new chapter from a very rough time, and we just want to be a part of the community. We're not looking, I'm not looking to build and flip. This is going to be our home. We're going to be here for a while, so, yeah. I just hope you take everything into consideration, just to get, make the space, you know, functional and for the boys to grow in. And the junior A to U is really for my mom, when she gets older. I can take care of her, and she can watch the boys while I work. So that's my position, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson, would it be appropriate for us to have the appellant speak and then public input, if any?
I'll, I'll go ahead and, and take that. So the, the public comment should occur before the, the final closing statement from the, both applicant and then appellant. So you could ask now whether there are any public, members of the public who wish to speak. I think we, we would want to check back in and make sure there aren't any final questions from commissioners of the applicant as well. So, so I would start with requesting if there are any members of the public.
Yeah, so we're a little out of sequence, but I will ask if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item two on our agenda at this time. Not seeing any, so we'll move back to the appellant, if he wished to come forward and add any additional comments.
So as I said in my, in my initial comments, the fact that this is a constrained lot and complying with those constraints would create a small backyard had to have been known before this process even started. So I struggle a little bit with the fact that doing what's right for the neighbors results in a small backyard, and that's unacceptable. So I don't really understand that argument. Yes, it's a small, I, I've lived in this house for over 20 years. I have the exact same size lot. We have a very small backyard. At one point, we had three children at home. I get it. I really do get that having a small backyard with, with active children can be a challenge. That's why we have parks and other places for children to go. But it's not no backyard. There's still a backyard that can be done, that can, that can be used by the family. I think if we're remembering the plans right, there are, in addition to the two windows, I think there's two doors on the side of the house or something along that line that has windows in them. So we were trying to remember in the back. The other thing is, is that somebody made the comment that the window in our bathroom is glass block. There are two windows in our master bathroom, the glass block is in the shower, the window over the, the tub that looks right at the sinks is a double hung, so, and what we do in the summertime is drop the top of the window to allow air to come in and light and, and all of that. It's, 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 it's frosted, so effectively, and, and maybe making the wall solid on the, on the balcony kind of cures, cures that problem. But I just wanted to correct that, that it's not glass block. There is a glass block, but that's not the window we're, we're concerned about. And then again, this, this house goes lot line to lot line across, not lot line, but the setback lines from one side of the lot to the other, and these houses all sit on 5,500 square foot lots. They're very small, so we have limited space between our house and our lot, and the, and the shared lot line, and the same on the other side. So it does, and when you put a two-story structure up five feet away from our house, it's just, it's just big. And so that was the other objective of trying to get the garage to the back, just to provide a little more room between the houses on the side of the house that we live 95% of the time. And then if, if there are all these windows and doors on that side of the house, we, the first we knew about the trees in the back of the lot was when we read the package that was sent out prior to this meeting. And so again, if there's nothing that can be done about those windows and doors, then let's put some trees along that, that setback to provide a little more privacy between that, that bedroom and bathroom window and, and our, our windows into our living space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions by commissioners? Commissioner Hanson?
I was just wondering if you could respond to the architect's suggestion to turn the garage gable to provide more light?
I don't, I don't, I don't know how that manifests itself. I don't know what that looks like, and, and kind of how much of, how much of remediating the problem does that accomplish?
Right.
At this, at this point, anything that moves in the right direction, we're in favor of. So, but I'd, I'd have to see the plans and, and kind of compare and contrast, honestly.
That's a perfectly fair response. I mean, conceptually, it's, it sounds good, but until you can actually see what it looks like, you know, it wouldn't. As to the architect's response about, and Commissioner Janoff's suggestion about changing the screening on the balcony to a solid screening, which it sounds like they're willing to do, how does that resonate with you in terms of the privacy issue with your master bathroom?
It's substantially better than lattice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's it.
Thank you.
Other questions for the appellant? Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, thank you. So when you talk about a constrained lot, could you go a little bit more into detail? Was it because there was a tree? There's a tree?
I'm using the term that was in the package that Ryan sent about the lot, that the lot is constrained because of where the tree sits, and, and it has to sit back further. I'm not a policy, a building policy expert, so I would rely on and welcome any corrections of what I'm saying. My understanding is the house had to sit back further to protect the, the root system of the redwood tree, which is a protected tree. And when the house sits back further, that exacerbates the problem with the backyard. And it's a 5,500 square foot lot. So back to my original point, that was known when the house was bought. So, you know, it feels to us as though that constraint is being foisted onto us.
Thank you.
Further questions? Not seeing any. So I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And ask commissioners if they have any questions of staff, wish to comment on the appeal or provide a motion. or provide a motion. Commissioner Joffe?
Thank you. Excuse me. You know, I think when we see this property and how narrow it is, it's pretty obvious what the constraints are. I'm looking at the recommendation by the appellant to move the garage to the back of the lot. And honestly, I don't know how that would be done because the width of the garage in the new design impedes on the house itself. So if you were to shift the garage back, it just shifts... I mean, it does crazy things to the interior layout of the house. And if you're talking about keeping only the garage in the orientation it is currently and move everything to the back of the lot, you've lost a lot of potential use of the lot on that northern side. So I'm not seeing a reasonable way to move the garage rearward. I think it has too many negative impacts on the whole house. So I'm not clear how that would work. And also with such a small lot, I think it's important to allow for as much yard as possible. I think that's very important to everyone. I think that the suggestions for the solid screen on the balcony is reasonable. And since it doesn't seem like there's been an analysis of how the windows line up, that should be done and an agreement to plant screening foliage where appropriate could be added. Initially, on the gable, I looked at the consulting architect's plans. And the first thing that jumped out to me is that reorienting the gable to forward versus side gable does very clearly go against the residential design guidelines and emphasizing the design of the garage. And then the architect just flipped the roof line, so now the peak is over the garage and it's flat along the entry. And so you've kind of lost the entry. And that's, again, not what the residential design guidelines ask for. On the other hand, if this makes such a big difference on such a small lot to prevent better light and air circulation, then I would be in favor of making the changes that the architect is recommending with regards to the gable and the garage. I just think it's a more attractive design as it was originally proposed, but I understand that there are circumstances that would make that change probably a change for the best.
Thank you. Commissioner Burnett and then Commissioner Hansen?
Yes, thank you. So my feelings are driving down this road, Wright Avenue, and looking at all the homes. Most of the homes, the garages are back, they're set back. There were no homes on the street that I found that had been added to that would impact the Woods' home as the new addition would with this home. My biggest concern is when you look at the story poles, no matter how you configure it and how you can do all the shadow studies you want, but their main part of their home, where they live the most is the south part, where all their windows are, their kitchen, their dining room. That's sort of where they live. And if you look at story poles, they will get literally no sunlight and no light if you look at how it's positioned there. So I further find that the adjustments that have been, you know, that they've made really will still impact the property at 473 Wright Avenue. So I don't see there's any mitigation on that. So my recommendation, and I think one of the bigger issues here, and we can't really address ADUs or whatever, but I think pushing the garage back and maybe eliminating some additional buildings in the back of the garage would be help towards, you know, satisfying the Woods' home. I mean, personally, I had this situation and I sort of feel empathetic towards it. And I handled it by just buying the house next to me. But that's just a side thing. But, you know, it's really impactful not to have sunlight coming into your household. I mean, it's very... And they've lived there for so many years. And when you buy properties, and then the other issue is if you look at the design guidelines, there's at least five different areas that are not addressed properly according to what our guidelines, our Los Gatos guidelines say, where this is impacting the Woods' home. So I feel fairly strongly that this should be... Their appeal definitely should be granted, and that's just my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hansen?
These things are always tough with introducing a second story into, you know, largely one-story neighborhood and especially when all these lots are very, very, very small lots. I do concur with Commissioner Janoff's thoughts that moving the garage to the back would create unintended consequences, including them not being able to have any yard for their dog and their kids. And I think that's too much of a big ask. I mean, our residents have a right to develop their property. This is within our codes, but it is creating issues for the neighbors. So that being said, with regard to the screening on the balcony, I think that doing the solid screening is a thing that absolutely should happen. When I looked at the pictures, I'm looking at page 79, as mentioned by your architect, and there's also 80 and 81. But the first thing that came to my mind was that the existing garage was already, without adding a second story, was blocking a big part of the view. But we don't know what it will look like. So it would be hard to say, for the planning commission to say, you should do this, especially when it violates the neighborhood or the residential design guidelines. But I do think that it should be pursued and studied because I think that at the end of the day, they're going to lose quite a bit of their light. And if that would help, that might be an okay trade-off with the residential design guidelines, but I wouldn't mandate it for anything. Other than that, I think putting any screening trees that... I think you need to continue... You would need to continue to talk to the neighbors and make sure that you put in any screening trees that would be needed. But I don't see any other major changes that could happen that would materially change the situation while still, you know, meeting the guidelines or the design goals that you have for your home, which are within our town code.
Thank you. Mr. Resby?
Thank you, Chair. So based on the packet before us, there are two issues before us. The first is winter sun or shading, and the second is the privacy. With respect to the winter sun, my understanding is, again, in the town of Los Gatos, is we haven't codified or memorialized, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, the notion of light, air easements, protections between lots. Largely, we depend upon our design guidelines to build reasonable structures. But aside from that, there is no guarantee of light landing, any certain amount of light landing on neighboring lots.
That is correct.
Thank you. So to that end, I think while we all try to be good neighbors, there is no legally justifiable reason based on winter sun that a second story couldn't be built. That being said, I think the gable, while I agree with Commissioner Janoff aesthetically, I would like to keep it. If it solves the problem of a little bit of sunlight and improves the view from the neighboring yard, then I would say, let's go ahead and try to implement that. With respect to the second issue, the rear balcony issue, I think there are some things that can be done, and I think those suggestions have already been proffered. The large or larger solid screen on the, I guess, north side of the property, together with planting trees on the property line between the two. And I would hope that those would be larger trees, evergreen trees. I would probably look to town to assist in recommending trees that would satisfy the goal of privacy on a year-round basis. But I think those are the changes that I would suggest. I would not be comfortable moving the garage back. I think, again, it is a difficult lot, but the notion of a full backyard, especially with young children in the town of Los Gatos, I think that serves a valuable purpose. And I wouldn't force that requirement upon the appellant. So I would approve, or rather, I would deny the appeal, but I would ask the appellant to make these minor changes as a condition of that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I'll say that I echo completely what you said. You took away my comments. And there seems to be a growing consensus among the majority of the commissioners. So possibly, we're ready for a motion.
Let me ask a procedural question. Since my formulation is a denial of the appeal, but with conditions to go forward, how would that be formulated?
Thank you. That would be a denial of the appeal and granting the approval of the minor residential development application with modified conditions. And through the chair, I would also add consideration based on what we heard from the appellant. It sounded like the additional screening on that second story balcony, story balcony, having that be solid was something that made a significant difference. Whether additional trees planted along that thin, relatively narrow setback space, and so there'd be limitations on type of trees that would do well there, an evergreen, and whether that actually adds more shade, you know, I'm not sure whether that, in the balance of things with the different concerns they've expressed, whether maybe an item for the commission to consider, whether doing the tree planting and the screening on the balcony is the right balance or not.
Commissioner Joffe?
Yes, thank you. I was thinking that the setback on the north side of the proposed plan is quite small, so planting large trees would probably not be good for either the trees or the light that the northerly neighbor wishes to have. That being said, if it helps to plant larger trees behind the junior ADU in the yard proper where there's more space, that may be appropriate. But I think if we're going to condition the approval, and I would like to see this solution handled by staff. It doesn't need to come back to the planning commission. But depending upon the discussion regarding changing the gable, let there be a discussion around that and a decision, a mutual decision between the applicant and the appellant to make that change. And same with any further planting. If any further planting is desired by the appellant as a result of following the solid screening, it may not be necessary. And again, it may further impact the light coming into their yard. So I would only ask that those be discussions following, but not in the formal motion by the planning commission.
I think I understand. I'll give it a try and then if there are further comments. So, Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please proceed.
To... I move to deny the appeal of the community development director's decision to approve a second story addition to an existing single-family residence on property zone R-1D, APN 52906027, for the property located at 473 Wright Avenue. And I would, let's see, grant approval of the minor development application with the condition that with respect to the second story balcony, there be a solid screen between the property owners. Is it to the north side or the south side?
It's the north side.
North side? That would be a condition of the approval. And further, as a point of discussion, but not condition of approval, a point of discussion between the applicant and the property owner that discuss the reorientation or removal of the gable over the garage area and the planting of appropriate tree cover between the properties.
Thank you for that motion. And I'll look for a second. Commissioner Joffe?
Second.
Is there a discussion of the motion? Commissioner Hansen?
I just had a question about the procedure. Does the motion need to incorporate the findings in Exhibit Two and the terms and conditions in Exhibit Three?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I amend my motion to include the findings and conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the second are approved as well.
Thank you. And Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment that most of the lots are 5,500 square feet and most of them have their garages towards the back, reducing the backyard space. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question and have commissioners raise their hand first in favor of the motion and opposed. So it passes four to one. Thank you very much. And thank you to both the applicant and the appellant for your important information and submission of this matter to the commission here.
And through the chair.
Are there appeal rights, Ms. Armour?
Yes, through the chair. I will note for the record that Commissioner Burnett voted no and that the final vote was four to one. The appeal rights, this decision of the commission can be appealed to the town council by any interested person as defined by Town Code, Section 2910020, within 10 days on forms available online with fees paid. Final deadline is 4:00 p.m. on the 10th day.
Thank you for that. And we'll move on to other business. Is there other business to be presented to the commission?
No.
And is there a report from the Director of Community Development?
Thank you. Just two things to share this evening. One is a report out on the town council meeting of the June 20th meeting. The economic vitality ordinance that was considered and recommended by Planning Commission was considered by town council on that date. It was approved at the first reading. Second reading will be scheduled for August 1st, and so it will go into effect in September. The Planning Commission's recommended language was approved with a few modifications. They decided to keep the requirement for a conditional use permit for group classes in downtown, also retaining conditional use permit requirement for formula retail, but they modified the definition of formula retail so that now it is not considered a formula retail unless there are 11 locations rather than seven. So it broadens or loosens that definition. And the formula retail conditional use permit requirement trigger is now at 10,000 square feet instead of 6,000 square feet. In addition, some additional specificity was added to the office definition. In addition to that, I do want to share with the Planning Commission and the public that we do have both a housing element advisory board meeting and a special general plan committee meeting, both scheduled on July 20th, to be working on items related to the housing element update. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Any questions of staff considering related to the report? Not seeing any. So now we'll go to subcommittee reports in addition to the service on the Planning Commission. Commissioners serve on several town committees. There are the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, and the General Plan Committee, which is now the Housing Element Advisory Board. And I'll ask, I know there was no further meeting of the CEDEC since our last report, and is there for Historic Preservation or GPAC? Mr. Burnett on Historic?
Yes, we did have a Historic Preservation Committee meeting today at 4:00, and we had seven items. So we were quite busy. And I don't have to go through them, but it was a great meeting.
And so I'll express my thanks to everyone who attended and for the staff's professionalism and my fellow commissioners for their preparation and participation. And I'll call the meeting adjourned. adjourned.[1771.48][1771.48][laughter]